Warning, warning.
Ever had to take Enfield through their water? Why did I forget? I was still, I forgot to pick it out of the tree. It wasn't a big deal until I went to give kids my education. Like whoops, sorry guys.
Okay, it being six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order on their seventh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the first item on the agenda is a presentation uh to someone who isn't here at the moment. We wish to, is not going to be here. And it is a lovely artifact. Let's see.
Yeah.
There we go, in the shape of New Hampshire, and there's Enfield, a little star. Um, it, it's very nice wood, in appreciation, Meredith C. Smith, Enfield Select Board, two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two. And Meredith has done far more for the town of Enfield than just be a member of the Select Board. Uh, she was a guiding force of the uh Mascoma Lakeside Park. Uh, she's been on the Heritage Commission, and she's been a, a guiding force of the Enfield Village Association. Uh, and we wish she were here to accept this, but uh we offer our sincerest gratitude for everything that she has done for a town she, of course, loves dearly. Thank you.
We will make sure that delivers.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of October fourth, should we do them both at once and then October seventeen?
I'm fine with both. Um, I found nothing that needed to be fixed.
Same here.
I will make a motion to approve.
Uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Next, we have board reports. And I actually have uh something to report from the Budget Committee. Um, uh, we went over the budget for ambulance and fire uh and uh police. And the one thing I, I would want to note is that it was a very peaceful and thoughtful uh and, and well-presented uh meeting. Uh, and, and I was really impressed with how well everyone worked together. And I think uh that we're gonna have a, a very orderly and organized budget process. And I think the numbers are, are gonna be, they're not gonna be great because these are tough times, but I think the numbers are gonna be good in the long run. I don't know if you want to add anything, Ed?
No, I think they're good. I want, I mean, the town's done a great job with um working on fund balance. So it's one thing we've talked about a little bit, but the budget numbers being presented are the budget numbers. But there are a few one-time projects in there that I think we can use fund balance for to lower the overall tax impact.
Thank you. Any other board reports?
Yeah, um, I'll just say Planning Board uh spent most of our time looking at zoning, potential zoning changes. And they're gonna looking for some, I would say, one-offs and like easier ones because as they complete the master plan, there's gonna need to be a rewrite. So the idea was to kind of just tackle some key pieces and do some cleanup. And it might be that we learn something in master planning and working with a professional and we have to tackle it again. But um, we spent quite a bit of time on that. Um, so talked again about parking spaces. Um, and it, there was a hot debate on the short-term rental ordinance. So I do, um, I don't know where that's gonna go. There is Planning Board this coming Wednesday. Uh, you saw some communications. There are members who feel it belongs with Planning Board. There are members who don't. So I don't, I don't know what the outcome is gonna be, but I want to tell you that that's one of the discussions. And I, you saw the email today. I, or it was, I guess, yesterday, today. I, I, I don't know where it's gonna go and if it's gonna come back to us. I guess I was hoping that they would give us a little more feedback between, before tossing it back over the phone.
Well, we may see where that goes. Um, as I presented to them, it really kind of falls into how we plan on enforcing this. And I go back and forth, but I do think it may end up coming back to the Select Board because I think there's gonna have to be some fines and penalties that are not a zoning violation, which would be more on board ordinance. But I agree with you. I think the, some of the discussion can be had there to talk through it and.
Mention of the Planning Board reminds me, uh, someone who's been proofreading the planning document expressed a real admiration for the high quality of the work that's been done and the high quality of what's been produced thus far.
Yes, and that is an excellent point. We did touch on the fact that people, within the proofreading stage, everyone has their homework, um, including Planning Board members, and we all have copies. So um, I think, you know, they're not looking for content, but if you see, there are enough proofreaders that unless you see an error, you think nobody's gonna spot. You might see it, John, because you actually teach.
But I'm not gonna be involved in it.
That's okay. I'm just saying, if you're skimming along and you see something egregious, feel free to throw it out there. But I, I think it's really coming together. I'm excited to see this get done. And I hope that it will press to the stage where we get it approved this time. Um, and because it's done a lot of hard work. And I think the document is very readable in, in real English, which is um important if you want it to be a usable tool.
Yeah, nice visuals and, yeah.
Yeah, but they've got somebody on the map too. So we've got map proofreading, we've got for, for sense, common sense things. And yeah, I think it's, I think it's gonna be good.
Good. Alright, that's it for board reports. Town manager's report.
Thank you. Um, as I normally start, I wanted to give a, a staff update. Uh, let this like board know that the town has made an offer which was accepted to a new employee for our highway superintendent position. Um, we're currently working through the background checks and other preparatory paperwork. And um, we're planning on having him start November twenty-eighth, the week after Thanksgiving. That'll give him one week overlap with Scott Johnson before he retires.
This is a pretty experienced individual, I take it?
Yeah, this, this is a, this is an individual with highway superintendent director type experience and a lot of road knowledge. We're pretty excited to bring him on board. Soon as we get through the background check, I'll do a little better introduction of who he is and his background. Um, kind of on the same note, um, we were down to one applicant on our police officer position after the physical fitness test. Um, Chief Allen had an interview with him today. It is a local person from here, from Enfield. And he um gave him a conditional offer of employment today, so. I did laugh that he's now that he's past the, the task, he's moving into the hardest part of getting hired, the background and the psychological.
Oh, yeah.
That washes out a lot of our police officers.
Alright.
We're hopeful that we move through that and we'll be, we'll be keeping you up to date on how we are hiring our new police officer. Um, just a quick auction result update on the three surplus items, the field fire truck and the ambulance. Ended up selling all three surplus equipment items for a total of fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and those have been picked up and they're. Nice to do that. The Gov Deal site is, makes life very easy. Um, I guess another update on there too that I didn't put in here, but we had talked about selling the trailer at Johnston Drive. I had DPW go down there to look at it, get it ready to go, and we're actually gonna end up scrapping that.
Oh, really?
The frame had rotted through and a few other things that were not visible from the outside. So they will be working on that. We will not be selling that. With that, I wanted to give us brief update on the invasive species project. Um, they've completed the field surveys of the entire town, all the town parcels and right-of-ways. And they identified and mapped over twenty uh non-native invasive species in town. Um, they've completed mapping all town right-of-ways, but they're about, about ten miles short of all of them, which they think they'll be done with in the next week or so. Um, the current focus is visualizing their finding in GIS and mapping them all. And they think that's gonna take a little bit longer than anticipated, but they expect to be done around mid-January. And then the focus from there will be turned to um public outreach and education. We'll be looking at that. We're excited to see how that, that comes forward. They did find down at the Johnston Drive property, uh, pretty rare species of willow. So we're working with them right now to, to look into that. And we'll, we'll get that properly identified moving forward and see what we need to do to make sure that we. We'll be looking at that. So it was good, not only invasive species, but, but found some other interesting things that the town has. And she was excited with a few other properties I'm sure she'll talk about in her report that she thinks could be really special maybe. Take care of in a different way than we have been.
Are we gonna share any of this information with neighboring towns?
We will a little. A big part of the goal, and I, I actually talked to Jack again today about it, was to, and I've talked to the boys in King, was really setting up a program that other towns can, can take advantage of. And I also think it's something that we can work with our state representatives and people to, to talk about the state right-of-ways and what they can do.
Right, exactly. You know, I, I noticed that New Hampshire DOT has been doing a lot of roadside mowing. And I don't think they're always as cautious as I hope we are these days.
Sometimes we are, and I'm sure sometimes we're not. But we do need to get better at it. Many towns do.
Yeah.
Most towns do just mow over it and it comes back fivefold.
Yeah.
Um, it'll be good to know where they are and, and get a management plan to start taking.
Yeah, and getting our folks who are private property owners further in so it doesn't creep back out. I pick on myself because I bought a property that's just loaded with kids that are not great.
Yeah. Well, and we've seen some of that happening. There were emails later this summer from the Mascoma Lake Association, starting to look at non-native species around the lake and encouraging private property owners to participate in that project. So hopefully we can continue to spread the word and stop the spread of the invasive species. Um, an update on the Public Safety Building. Um, we're currently working with Black River Designs SW Coal Engineering Ventures and Pathways Engineering to complete the topographic studies and geotechnical boring studies. Um, the boring from SW Coal are scheduled for December ninth. Um, we will be working, we also are gonna be working with our DPW department. I talked to Black River Designs today. And we're gonna get down there hopefully sooner than that and dig a few test pits so they really know what's under the ground and they can continue with their design work, not waiting for that boring to come back. So we'll be working on that hopefully over the next couple of weeks. At our last AMFACT meeting, um, Black River Designs supplied conceptual designs kind of in pieces of the different areas, so the fire area, ambulance area, police offices, you know, kitchen, conference room. And so it's kind of nice to talk through those, look at what their concepts were, talk about flow of the building and how things might be able to fit together. And so it was, it was a really good discussion. Everybody came away from that pretty happy with how far it seemed like we came in just a few weeks. Um, we do meet again tomorrow and we're interested to see what they, what they bring back from that. Hopefully the flow and how things will work will be ready. And as soon as we get that survey done and we know how we can start to lay out the building, they can just put those puzzle pieces together. I'm also working right now with the town attorney to prepare a letter of intent for the Shaker Hill Granite Site as we're moving forward with pouring and doing diggings and stuff. We need to have a, a legal letter of intent move forward. The expected purchase date will be in twenty twenty-three, probably early twenty twenty-three. But we'll, we'll get a letter letting him know that we're gonna be completing our due diligence and forward of the purchase unless we find something that we're not expecting. Um, with that, I wanted to take a, a little bit of time and happens to be here. But to thank Kevin Marker for the Halloween event that he put together this year. It was a, it was a great event. Uh, non-official count from some of the, at least two of the trunk-or-treaters was that we had over four hundred kids that came.
Really?
Yep. Gave out a lot of candy and uh the haunted house was a lot of fun. Kids were going through over and over again and all the carnival games. It just, it made an atmosphere where people really wanted to hang around instead of just go through the trunk retreat and leave. So it was a, it was a great time. I wanted to thank Kevin for his hard work. Thank the students from Mascoma Valley Regional High School that came down and worked the haunted house and the games and helped make everything come off. And then all the volunteers that came together and spent time at their trunks or helped put things together. It was a, a good community effort and a, a great event. Another side note from that, that I don't know if it was meant or not, but it also helped some of the local businesses. I spent many hours there manning my trunk myself. And when me and my wife left, we decided that we were not gonna cook dinner. So we went to pick up food and it was full of ghost goblins and princesses sitting at the table eating with their parents. And so it was nice to, nice to see people out and just the town was vibrant with kids back there. Um, I'd also like to say that I spent a little bit of time at the Union Street Fire Station in the Enfield Police Department on Halloween night. It was another good event. A lot of kids, a lot of good spirit, um, a lot of fun to be had, a little bit too much fun by Emily, but it was, it was a good time. So it was, it was just nice to see again parents and kids getting out. And I'd like to thank the Enfield Police Department for taking time to, to set up on Shaker Hill and made sure that everybody had a safe trick-or-treating event. So it was a, a nice time to be had for that whole weekend. And then I'll finish up with the boil order that we released on Friday. Um, we were alerted Friday afternoon of a positive E. coli test from one of our testing sites. Um, we did test multiple sites and only had a, a positive test come back for one. Um, DES came down that afternoon, late e, or early evening, and went around and did inspections with Jim. They're fairly confident that the E. coli was from the sampling site and was not actually in the water system. But out of an abundance of caution, we issued the boil order and the boil order still remains in effect now. Um, we need two clean tests before we can release that boil order. So we tested today. I don't know the results of that. We'll be testing tomorrow. So our, our hopes are still sometime on Wednesday that we can release that boil order. But we're fairly confident that the water's clean, just again, out of abundance of caution, it's best to do. A few questions that we have had that I wanted to just bring up so people may know, and we'll put some information about this out tomorrow, is um, you know, before drinking or boiling, before drinking or consuming water, make sure you boil it. Water filters do not remove bacteria or viruses, so it's good to, good to boil. If you're washing dishes, it's best to do a little bit of water and about one teaspoon of bleach and do a, a final rinse. So you're not rinsing it in water that may have some contaminant in it. And then um you can also use a dishwasher if it has a sanitizing cycle. That would be fine. Don't have to worry about that. And then most people can take a shower. We did get a few questions about that. What about showers? Try not to drink or swallow the water. If you're, have little babies or someone that's immunocompromised, you may wanna, may wanna bathe in a different way where there's less chance of getting something in your mouth. But, and then the other thing that I didn't really think about until I said it, but if you wash your hands, it's best to use a sanitizer or something after that. So you don't, but those are a few questions. Again, we're fairly confident the water's safe, but we've still asked that people follow the boiling water order for the next two days.
And testing gonna be pretty complicated. I used to do the water testing for the family in. And if I wasn't just absolutely super careful, I'd get that kind of result.
Yeah, the clothes and that.
Yeah. Yeah. I did have one question. Uh, how did we notify people about the boil order?
Uh, there's a lot of different ways. I don't know everything that we did. I know Jim posted some notices around the downtown village area where they were. I had Rob Taylor send notices to all the restaurants, so they had a, a direct email notification. We put it out on Facebook. It was on the website. We put it out on listserv. We also um contacted some different media sites. We know it was on WMUR.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's what we did to do that. We have had some discussions today about some other possible ways that we could, we could get the, the order out a little bit differently. There is some systems and I think we, well, I know we have access to one if we use it or not in the past. We will be looking into it for, for direct phone calls to people's houses.
Yeah, KUAA uses a system like that.
Yeah.
For at least five hundred people or maybe more. Works quite well.
Yeah, the state provides a code-red system through the nine-one-one. That's a reverse nine-one-one fact that we should be able to use. I just want to make sure it's set up and we put in place. And then I also wanted to see, we can do it either way, but I wanted to see if there's a way that we could maybe get the addresses that would be connected to the water system. But if not, it would be worthwhile to just call everybody and let them.
I think one of the big challenges too is a lot of the water users happen to be renters. After apartment buildings, they just um, like I constantly see their addresses changing in work that I do. Um, and so I think some of us have to also choose to be neighborly and be like, hey, you remind, remind your renters. Or, you know, in the case of, I sent it along to the search and said, you have communion coming up and maybe don't switch everything out with water and then serve. So I think some of it is also choosing to be neighborly, and we know how hard it is to communicate in a way that people actually take it in, so.
The other couple of things we do have on our website, so if you would sign up on our website, we do have email notifications right now. So when those types of things go up, you automatically.
And that seems to work pretty well from what I hear.
It does. Um, we're looking at a website upgrade for the next year. If we do that, it will allow us text notification as well as email, so we'll be, we'll be at that. And then, like I said, we're looking into the phone notification. And then we did, um, on the DES site, there's five different notifications that they, they say you can work through. They want you to do two or three of them at least, and we did four of the five. The only one we didn't do was go door-to-door on every door. Other than that, we did four of the five ways that DES asked that we do.
Thank you. Is that it for?
Yeah, I think that's all I have.
Um, next, we have communications, NHMA correspondence disposition of legal files.
So sort of breaking out a lot of dates and things. We've gotten this um letter from NHMA that they have legal files that, that have been corresponding with work they did for the town. They plan on disposing of them unless we want them to send them to us and then.
I mean, I feel like we would have copies of what? Beaved?
I would think the same.
Um, just, I mean, sometimes you're just adding another layer of clutter. And if you, I mean, I, my expectation is that our team would keep what they need and have it organized and it would be available for public review if needed and appropriate. So I, I kind of feel like adding somebody else's files to ours. Like especially where a legal file you, that, that's their notes. Like you may never have even gotten them. Now you're stuck in a position of like, I'll put this note on here and I can't explain it because it wasn't part of the discussion. I just think, I, I don't think it's something that necessarily would help, but I think you guys want them.
No, I would agree. Most everything, at least my correspondence when I reach NHMA, is when I have a specific question for a specific issue.
And we keep all that.
Probably wouldn't go dig through these files to find it. I'd just ask the questioning.
Uh, yeah. You don't need a motion or anything, do you?
I don't think so. I think we'd need a motion if you wanted to keep them. If not, we.
Yeah, let's let it ride. Okay, under business, first item up is public space rental presentation.
I will do most of the presentation. Um, Kevin Marker, it was one of the things I charged him with when we, when we hired a new rec director was to, to look at a better way to coordinate the rentals of public buildings. Um, he took it one step farther. Instead of just looking at a way to do this better, he put quite a bit of research into what other towns are doing and different ways that we can, we can do some rentals and maybe maximize um, not only rental income. I mean, that was mentioned in here, but a little bit more to organize and allow people to, to be able to plan and use public space a little bit better. So um, the first portion is, I guess, a little bit more of just letting you know what we're going to be doing. Um, we have, we do have the Rec Desk Program. Um, Kevin tended webinars and has been doing a lot of work on how to, how to use that system. And we can make rentals of public spaces a little bit more convenient and easy by opening up an online portal through Rec Desk for people to be able to, to sign up and, and register their own time slots. Those will go to Kevin for approval, so we'll be, we'll be looking at them. And if we know a town event or something's gonna be that day, we can conduct people back and work with them. The other thing that he can do through that is set up different codes for different organizations that work closely with the town or are part of the town. So if they wanted to do it, they wouldn't necessarily have to put in their credit card information or whatever to, to book the community space. They can book it, put in their code. It'll go for review without having to, to put in any pay for the space. Um, but it also does bring that forward where we can, we can make it a little more user-friendly to pay for the, for the venues. Um, the other thing that he noticed under the rental blocks is we have two blocks right now, and they kind of overlap in a, in a funny way. And watching usage of the buildings, he determined that if we broke that into three different blocks throughout the day, that we could have more usable time by, by breaking those down. And then the, the rest of the document really goes down to talking about rental spaces, what we can be renting. The community building we currently do, and he would propose a rental fee would be fifty dollars per block of those three blocks or a hundred dollars for the full day.
How does that impact cleaning? It does have to be cleaned, doesn't it?
It's not cleaned right now between the uses.
It isn't?
Every time. It's, you know, they're supposed to clean up their own space. Right now, the timeframe between those three, the, the timeframe between each of those blocks is the same as the timeframe between blocks now.
But I do hear a lot of complaints about the lack of cleanliness in the building.
I think we don't, we need to stop giving people back their deposit and that will.
Yeah, we do need to do a little better at that.
Someone actually has to look at it.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I think there are two, two, two factors there. Someone has to inspect it and then we have to be willing to take the.
I can't tell you how many times I've gotten to clean it before and after an event.
Say, we'll have to look at it because we don't have the manpower to inspect it after every single event. We just, there's no way we could do that.
You could take a picture though, right? If you get it dirty.
Picture if it's really dirty.
We have asked for that to be submitted prior to them starting.
Yeah.
Something that's, you know, dated, timestamped, or just phoning in something. They're not very good at it. Usually wait till after they're bent.
We have had less issues and complaints of cleanliness after we hired our maintenance person because that brought forth like issues that we have, like, you know, sanitizer not getting to the right temperature or whatnot. Um, what with him, he's been able to fix things, get things repaired and get the cleanliness. I know one complaint a lot of people had is the ceiling fans were, I agree, disgusting. Uh, where you wondered if eating under those were good or not. Um, but he's, you know, having someone who can go and clean that, I mean, that's changed. He's also completely repainted it. So I think the complaints were something before we had a building maintenance person. Now having one, I do get more positive.
Yeah, the overall cleanliness of the building is better than if, if someone doesn't clean after themselves when they leave. That's a, that's a different issue.
Right.
So, and then that's what, I mean, that's what I would recommend, that we put that on our forms and on the site. That if you get there and the kitchen's a complete disaster after another event, take pictures and make sure that we get those. Kind of not great for the event coming in, that they have to deal with that, but we may be able to, to work between. Make sure that we make that as right as possible. With that, another thing that he brought up is that we, um, we don't do it now, but we have the availability of renting the pavilions. A lot of places revent, rent pavilions like that for family gatherings, those types of things. It's nice for people to be able to use it, but you can't really plan a family event if you don't know for sure that you're gonna get it to reserve it for the weekend. And I think if you reserve it, that there should be some sort of be associated with that to make sure that you're time blocking for, for your event.
Then the question is, how's that gonna impact the general public's use of the facility? After all, it's for the general public. Not supposed to be a moneymaker for the town necessarily.
No, and it won't necessarily be a, a moneymaker, if you will. There's not a lot of money in it. But it's, to me, it's more allowing you to use it for a bigger event. I mean, if we want to just keep them open for the person that wanders by and wants to sit at a picnic table, we can definitely do that. These are, these are the recommendations that we're bringing forward that the select board can talk about. The other one to think about on the pavilions is the um, Mascoma Lakeside Park Pavilion. We have had people reaching out wanting to use it for weddings and those different types of things that take a lot of planning. And if, if we're going to move in that direction, I think it's something to talk about.
Right, and I, I would just caution us, be careful if we don't get into position where we have to close the entire park because someone wants to have a wedding there.
Yeah, we would not close the park. We're not allowed to close the park for our.
So it'd be, might be a funky wedding.
But they would have to know that, but they would, they could reserve the space of the. Yeah.
I think a lot of weddings do, they have a site for the wedding that might be standing or not as formal like. It's in the gazebo in um, oh, is it, it's on um, Penapee. No, it's not Newbury. Anyways, they have, I've been to a couple there. And so I think it's a neat idea. And you could probably balance it out by making it so it's only certain weekends or, you know, rotating like one weekend and Sunday or something. I don't know. I'm very open to it. I like the idea. I've been asked a lot. Um, I think it gives access to the public, to something that's a really cool facility.
Something to add um, with uh, having like the public space rental. Um, something I found in my research, uh, a lot of places put in the verbiage of the rental that you are renting a public space, the public is going to be there. So it's just a risk you kind of take. I know my hometown in their rental agreement, that's the first thing they say is you are renting in a public park, you can't rent the whole park, so just understand the public will be there. We, I'm, I do put later in this that uh, the signage option, which you could then notify the public that, hey, this person has it if you want to rent it for years. And then it kind of goes on an honor system where I think people will be like, oh, if I want that, I can rent it.
Yeah, and I don't think we're gonna, like, side park maybe, but I don't think we're gonna see this big rash of Hughes Park being rented out all the time. It'll be a one-off thing here and there, but it does give people that opportunity. And then Shaker Ball Fields as well, it's something that, we didn't put a price in there at this time, but we have had, you know, soccer camps that run that. Here, so it's just another place. And then, as Kevin said, we follow up with um, some signage options. And that's something that we would talk about, that there would be a sign there that as soon as we know that it has been reserved, we can, we can put something up to let people know the dates and times. And then we'll also, if we move in this direction, we would also have the electric calendar that would show when they were. So it was something as I put in my, my write-up, I wasn't looking for a decision tonight from the select board, but I wanted to bring it forward, have questions and answers. If there's something else you want us to research, or if you just want to discuss it a little bit. A good starting point for discussion and something to think about as we move.
Can you remind me, is there any sort of furniture in the uh, Lakeside Park Pavilion?
Um, there's right now one picnic table, but I do know that as the park is more developed that there will probably be picnic tables, benches, that will probably.
It always struck me as sort of bare.
Yeah.
Well.
I think it's more for events. They put the picnic table in there because we were having trouble with kids riding bikes through and hitting their tires on the ground. So there's a picnic table in there now that can be moved out. And then most of the events that I've seen people have brought up are smaller, easy to move tables that. Those picnic benches are really heavy. Not by yourself, you don't.
Well, it would be nice to have some picnic tables there.
The Hughes, or the Lakeside Park ones are probably three.
Yeah.
They are massive.
Good, because I'm like, those ones in Hughes are easy enough to move. I was like, uh-oh. They'll do some rearranging. I, I, I like it and I think it's really well organized. And it answers a lot of questions that I get asked all the time where I say, call the town office, call the town office, town office. And I, people are always looking, especially since COVID, for outdoor spaces to be. I, I think it's a great opportunity to really leverage the nice spots we have. My only concern, and this is not anything against this proposal, is just a general concern about one moment someone's renting, the next minute they want a tent. Right? And they want the big tent with the big stakes. And I think just having some language in there that like you damaged the turf. Or maybe you say you don't get a big tent. Um, I think I've been asked a couple of times about the Shaker Ball Field. Like, can we put a wedding tent out there? And I'm like, ooh. Because the wedding can do some damage to turf, and that turf is actually considering how old it is and how, it's pretty good. It's pretty good. Um, you look at it compared to the high school field that was redone more recently. And so, you know, just thinking about that, so. Not that I think, you know, we're.
I think something we could add in the verbiage of the rental is tents could really only go like between the dog park and the fields. I wouldn't want to ever put a tent on those just because you're, you're instantly going to destroy whatever's there. Um, so I would put in the verbiage personally that.
We can just look and see if we start getting that question, it's something that we can.
Yeah, I was specifically asked because it's, it's so flat. That was like. There aren't many flat spaces in New Hampshire, so I get, I get why it was asked. I think it's great.
Okay, are we good? Thank you very much.
So we'll bring it, bring it back to you guys and this is what you want to do where.
Next up, we have the authorization of First Light Fiber Lease.
So I'd like to know, it was either a meeting or two meetings ago that um, that I was working on this lease. Um, they have fifty square feet upstairs in the Cajun area where the, the fiber equipment is at. I've been working with First Light for quite a while back and forth. And we've come to an agreement or a tentative agreement that they would list that, that they would lease that fifty square feet for five hundred dollars a month. And they've also agreed that they would put in a separate meter, so they would pay their own utility. As I stated last time, I think it's a, a big step from not getting paid anything and paying all the electric costs. They'll be, they'll be covering that. And it won't cover the entire fees for town internet, but it'll pay a large portion of those, which help offset some of our budgetary.
You want to make the motion?
I make a motion to authorize the town manager or their designate to enter into a five-year lease agreement as presented and to take all actions and execute all documents as necessary.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, award property sale of town-owned properties.
Okay, it's a little bit harder. You should have got an email today from. Oh, yeah, we need the ambulance one.
Thank you, Nita.
Back up one again.
Oh, authors say to spend ARPA funds for the purchase of a new ambulance.
So as it is in your, in your packet, um, we talked with the C I P committee. And, and Richard from the EMS, N B L, EMS ambulance. And um, they, they were wanting to move forward with the purchase of a new ambulance. The price quote came in at two hundred and fifty-six thousand, hundred and five dollars. As we discussed before, that we were going to use some C I P funds to purchase the Shaker Go Granite site and use ARPA funds to purchase through the C I P. So instead of authorizing capital improvement plan money for that, um, we wanted to come to the select board and ask to use up to two hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and five dollars from ARPA funds to move that purchase forward sooner than later. Um, in talking with Richard, we've learned that ambulances are somewhere in the two-year waiting list right now. So we wanted to, to get our name in the hat and get that purchase moving.
All right, I'll make the motion. Authorize the spending, I move we authorize the spending of up to two hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and five dollars of town ARPA funds for the purchase of a new ambulance as approved at the public hearing on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And further authorize the town manager or their designate to take all actions and execute all documents as necessary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we award the property sale of town-owned property. We have a list.
We do, and to to update you a little bit, this um, map nine lot thirty-nine is, I don't want to call it landlocked, but it's almost a landlocked piece of property in um, Patty and Tom Williams' property. It kind of goes in the middle. We did give you a map of that in your. Another thing to, to be aware of that I don't know that was given to you was um, this was a tax-dated property. So the town can accept money up to what our costs are. Right now, we will have a few other fees, but our total estimated cost that we need to pay off is two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
And anything that we get in excess of that has to go back to the prior owner, which would be the heir of the estate of.
If folks didn't respond and pay the taxes.
Right.
So yeah, we have, we have two that I would kind of move forward to you. I think it's, it's pretty self-explanatory the, you know, looking at the use of the property is what we put as one of the major factors. What this will be done, we made sure to list it not just as the highest bid. So looking at this, um, Patty and Tom Williams bid up to three thousand dollars. And they want to merge that into their lot, so it's not landlocked in the middle of it as it is. And then David and Victoria Rogers bid five thousand seven dollars with the intent of building a house on that lot.
How would they access it?
Um, there's a twenty-foot right-of-way up the side.
Oh, up the side.
I've heard it's not the greatest access. That's something that they would definitely have to improve.
They own other, their butters.
Are they a butters?
I believe they've been before the planning board for David and Victoria Rogers, yep. Um, yeah, they have the little white and brown cat cape. So they're the other butters. So um, they're, they're.
So it's saying they don't really need the right-of-way?
What? No, but um, they've been to the planning board to do some stuff. I don't recall off the top of my head exactly how it lays out. But it kind of, the finger onto the land and I don't know. I kind of, I, this was something that I, we discussed about um, when we were talking about different things to look at for zoning. And one of my complaints is how many ridiculously shaped lots we make just to get five acres, right? Like, we have tails and trunks all over the place and uh, it, it, we're not going to make any more money. I guess that's one of the things. So.
And then the other, the other thought, not that they couldn't get variances to do that or build on the spot, but the one acre lot would be non-conforming if they were to build outside of the original footprint of the cabin. That's kind of still. It's not in great shape.
I didn't know a twenty-foot right-of-way was legal anymore. Maybe because it's pre-existing?
It's even, yeah.
It's a little cattle house. Um, I mean, Tom, Tom and Patty have been here for this parcel before. And, and discussed it with us before.
Well, to me, the, the merger makes the most sense.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand they want to build a house, but they've got two, at least two building projects going on. So we could ask Rob, um, if anybody wants to come in. I can look. I just, I have a hard time like making another weird lot. That's non-conforming. Like, I guess I would, if we were going to do that, I would want it to get approved by like doing conceptual or planning.
Good to you for an award tonight. Now, I do award it tonight, but.
Well, I, I would go with the Patty and Tom Williams merging it.
Can I just ask the question, um, are we allowed to just sell it for the total cost or we have to do it for?
Is, oh, for their escalator?
Way that, because I'm like, then you have to hunt, try to hunt somebody down and give them back money. And it might cost more money to give back the change than it.
I don't know what the process is. It has changed. I think you have to, you have to follow, you'd have to send it, I think, to the state of New Hampshire and then they hold it for whoever it is we think the heirs are. We know of one heir.
Okay, so, yeah. As long as it can get sent to the state and it doesn't turn into our problem, because that's what seven hundred and twelve dollars.
Yeah, I don't think that we have to.
Yeah, and we're going to have some other fees, so it's going to be really.
Okay, okay. All right.
What are you saying?
I meant, do you want to make the motion?
I move that we uh, authorize town manager to uh, sell this, dispose of this house, Patty and Tom, this property, Patty and Tom Williams.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second property would be the burnt-out home on four A, so thirteen eighty-seven through four A. This one's a little bit more straightforward. We didn't put, what are you using the property for? We did put some disclaimers that it would have to be cleaned up and repaired for building on a certain amount of time. So we'll put, I'm going to use the word reverter, but legally, that's not the right term. But there's a term like that, that if they don't get that done in a certain amount of time, it comes back. With that, this was based solely on rights.
So it's some kind of like permissory note function or?
Yeah, there's a reverter clause, which automatically, if they don't get it done, comes back. And then there's another term that I can't remember that you write it in a way where it's the town's decision if they. So we will use that one.
I.
Stuck with something we don't want.
I will make a motion that we award um, the winning bid of seven thousand dollars to Bobby Oaks for thirteen eighty-seven New Hampshire Route four A.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last one, I just wanted to update you on, we didn't get any bids for the mobile home.
Then we go to the open house.
Cash. We had one person go to the open house and look at it, which was one of my neighbors and stated he was going to bid, but never received it. Um, per our agreement with the mobile home park, they will be purchasing this home for take our losses.
Do you, you need a motion to that effect or are we just?
No, I've already done.
Perfect.
Um, deputy town clerk and assistant town clerk appointments.
We can explain the whole backstory if you'd like, or it makes you.
That was the whole catch, you can't take cash if you're not writing somebody? No, not that one?
No, it's um, the town had gotten a legal opinion from N H M A that a deputy town clerk could reside outside of the town.
Okay.
We hired Patty, who's doing a wonderful job. We received a phone call from the Secretary of State's office, and after a few back and forth, they're adamant that she be, hold the title of deputy town clerk. So I talked with our attorney. He did a little bit more digging than N H M A did, found some legislative notes where they reinstated in two thousand and two the requirement that she live in town. But we also received a call from the Secretary of State's office that gave us two different ways that they could work around it. Pretty much, we can call her an assistant town clerk. She can do all the same work she's been doing, but she's not allowed to sign marriage certificates or any of those things. So the two things the Secretary of State's office said we could do is get a stamp with Wendy's name on it, and she could stamp the marriage certificate and it would be legal. We're going to deputize Jerusha, so when Wendy's not there, Jerusha can sign these forward. Before you do that, I've already talked to um, Josh and Suzanne Prentice. And we're hopefully, Suzanne's looking at a few things, but we are going to be moving legislation forward here to get that living restriction removed. It makes no sense to me that she can do all the same work and just hand a piece of paper to someone to sign that doesn't know if the work was done correctly or not. So we'll try to get rid of that rule, but until then, we're going to do the work. So we'll try to get rid of that rule, but until then, we're gonna do the work.
Around town clerks are antiquated at best.
So we're just gonna ask you to deputize Jerusha as deputy town clerk, and we're gonna Patty as assistant.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Acceptance of donations to Mascoma Lakeside Park Fund, three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars in aggregate.
I'll make a motion that we accept these donations for thanks.
Uh, I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye.
Great to find the timber tacks thing you said.
Well, unfortunately, I'm, we'll bring it over to you tomorrow.
Ah, the great clear cut.
What are we coming with the uh, that, that land up on Methodist Hill Road?
There's a few people that looked at it. I've done a little bit of research, but I have not went up there. I've been, I've been busy.
Right. I had, I had a long uh, voicemail message from Dr. Teis. I, I haven't responded.
There's a few ideas that I think we may be able to do up there, and we may be able to, we may be able to work on that property in a way where we can. So I'm gonna continue looking at that, do a little bit more research and come back to. I don't know how quickly that'll be.
Well, we are actively investigating.
Kind of.
It is not the top priority, maybe.
As soon as I get unburied with some of the other stuff.
Right.
I mean, at least it's not going anywhere.
No, we own it until we decide to do something else.
And, public comments? Any comments from the public on the screen? Or not?
I have a couple just for you. Um, I, if, many of you have probably seen, but um, Enfield Village School became blue ribboned school, and that's a, a pretty big deal. It's a, a huge achievement, and they'll be celebrating this Thursday. Wanted to acknowledge the staff and the folks in town who work with them, congratulate them. And then, putting on another hat, wanted to remind everybody that the Thanksgiving in-gathering is coming up. There's a number of social organizations and area churches that I've run the master plan hat comes on. And so, um, obviously, there's a donation portion of it and the relationship with the food bank who provides like a portion of the food. But I also really wanted to stress that if you know somebody who should be referred to get a Thanksgiving box, there are forms online, and we can nicely put them in the town newsletter, so you can easily pick them up in the town newsletter or um, pick a form up online. It's fillable, but not, you can't submit it that way. It's a mail-in and we'll pull. So if anyone needs them or needs help, there's plenty of people who can do that. And I hope that that will help us on folks with the cost of um, food this season. I know it's gonna challenge. And the school offering fills up very quickly. Richard has raised his hand.
Hello? Someone has their hand up?
It's me. Hi, John. Um, quick thing, I don't know if Kate mentioned it, and I apologize if I missed it about the um, upcoming public kind of feedback session on the master plan this Sunday that I know has been announced. Um, it's from two to four, I think it is, at the DPW. Um, just kind of a, did we get it right? I think is what we're calling it. I think there's been some posts about it and probably will be a couple more. But I just wanted to throw that out there for the record.
Thank you very much. Very important.
I wanna follow up with something I could have put in my town manager report, but I wanted to congratulate the boys soccer team from the Roma Valley Regional for making it to the championship game. I did take a few minutes or an hour yesterday afternoon to ride with one of our police officers in the long parade that we had guiding them back to the high school. And it was good to see um, Crefton and Cannon and Enfield come together to, to celebrate their accomplishment and what they did. It was a, a great job making it to that, that championship game.
It's the first time they've ever been, and it'll be their very first soccer banner.
So we need to go into non-public now? And I, did I move that we?
We're gonna do this, it's one motion, but it's gonna be three separate non-publics, but we're not gonna come out of none. I mean, we'll kind of come out, we're not gonna come out of anyone. There'll be three separate sets of minutes, so we can seal them differently if.
By hereby move, we go into non-public for the purpose of ninety-one dash eight, colon, three. Two.
Smale, Smalsee, and Smalteach. All of them.
There we go.
Uh, I mean, yes.
All in favor? Yes, also. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.